Ready?
You got nine o'clock, stand for the clock, it's time you got.
Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mahew.
Yeah.
Charles Wiltse.
Here.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Here.
Item two, approval of the agenda. Any additions or corrections, commissioners?
Like to make an addition to accept the proposal for the nature park.
That'll be under new business?
Good.
You want it under C?
That's. Fine.
Is that okay?
Or, yes.
Any other additions or corrections?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what that was.
We're gonna put that under C, proposal of the nature park.
Wow.
Under a new business, item C.
Yeah, go ahead.
Any other additions or corrections? We entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the stated changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with changes.
Motion from Commissioner Wiltse.
Second.
Support from Commissioner Scott. All in favor say yes.
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 Opposed. Motion carries item three, declaration of conflicts of interest, under section eleven point one of the Board of Commissioners, rules of procedure, every commissioner present shall vote whenever a question is called by the chairperson, no member present shall abstain from voting yes or no unless excused by a majority of those present. If a commissioner believes that there is a reasonable appearance of a conflict of interest on an agenda item, then here she shall disclose a potential conflict at this time. The commissioners will describe the relationship or interests that underlies a conflict of interest or reasonable appearance of a conflict of interest. The board will then determine if the member is excused from voting by a majority vote of those present. Is there any declaration of conflicts of interest?
I have a slight conflict here.
Go ahead.
Well, proposal.
Do you want to state it now?
Say what?
Would you like to state it now, what your conflict is?
He's my brother.
Okay. So are you asking to abstain?
Yeah, well, I mean, I want to ask a question because it's already been approved. No, no, I, I, I will say he is my brother. Because it hasn't been approved, but the only thing we're deciding on this appears is if we're gonna have a new well, or we're just gonna have a hookup. So I don't know, would that be a conflict?
Tim, your thoughts?
Uh, it's the same contractor, no matter what, so if the conflict exists for one, it will exist for the other as well.
Alright.
So then, yes. I'm gonna make a motion to accept Commissioner Simmons' um, abstain from voting from eight C proposal, the nature park well.
I'll support.
We have a motion with support. Does that a roll call vote? It is correct. Any further discussion on that? Roll call vote.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltse.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons. She abstains from this too.
I believe so.
Yeah, I can't vote.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Item four, review of minutes for A, July twenty seventh, twenty twenty through, twenty twenty three, regular meeting minutes.
I've read them and I'll make a motion to accept them as presented.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott.
I'll second.
Support from Commissioner Wiltse. Any further discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed. Motion carries item four B, August third, twenty twenty three, committee of the whole meeting minutes.
I've read the, the minutes. I'll make a motion to accept them.
We have a motion from Commissioner Wiltse.
Support.
Support from Commissioner Scott. Any further discussion? This is on the committee of the whole meeting minutes. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed. Motion carries item five, public comment and agenda items only. Any public comment in the room on agenda items only? Any public comment on the phone? Item six, correspondence, we receive correspondence from the Saddle Valley Committee Mental Health Authority related to the vacancy notice, the July twenty fourth, twenty twenty three meeting minutes, the monthly meeting minutes. We receive correspondence from Michigan Association of Counties related to service report and from Northeastern Michigan Community Service Agency related to the June twenty, June second, twenty twenty three meeting minutes and twenty twenty four meeting dates. Those have been received and filed. Item seven, action on consent calendar. This can, the consent agenda consists of action items that the board determines to be routine. Before putting the question to the commissioners, the chairperson will allow commissioners to remove the consent agenda. Those items on which they have questions or wish to debate. A vote is not required to remove a manner from the consent agenda. The chairperson will ask for a roll call vote on the consent agenda. Items removed from, from the consent agenda will be moved to new business unless otherwise indicated. I reckon approval of the agenda. I, I don't, I think these are fairly routine. Do you guys have any that you want to pull? I think those were, these were all discussed fairly well in the committee of the whole. Commissioners, is there any you'd like to pull?
I'm fine with it together.
Commissioner Scott?
Uh.
Is there any you'd like to talk about?
Probably just the two appointments we probably might keep separate.
Which would be?
You know.
Uh, item F?
You know.
And E?
Yeah.
Any, any Commissioner Simmons or Commissioner Mahew would like to pull?
Sorry, I see.
Is there any on the consent agenda, item seven A through G that you'd like to pull? We're gonna pull item E and F.
No, I don't have any problem.
So right now, we have item seven A, resolution to accept proposal for inmate voters, visitation and email services. Item B, resolution to accept proposal for transit building FASHA project. Resolution to authorize entry of participation in the Walgreens National Opiate Settlement. Item D, resolution to approve county building security policy amendment. And item G, resolution to approve pretty on policy amendments.
Motion to consent agenda, everything but E and F.
We have a motion with Commissioner Scott.
I'll second.
Support from Commissioner Wiltse. Any discussion on any of those items? Roll call vote.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltse.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Item seven E, resolution to appoint a member to the Saddle Valley Committee Mental Health Authority Board. This resolution is sponsored by a Saddle Valley Committee Mental Health Authority Board. Board member Gale Evans resigned from the Saddle Valley Committee Mental Health Board effective on June twenty sixth, twenty twenty three. Ogumaw County is the only a Saddle Valley Committee Mental Health member not represented by an elected county commissioner. Approval of the resolution will appoint District Three County Commissioner Charles Wiltse to the Saddle Valley Committee Mental Health Board of Directors for the remainder of the three-year term ending March thirty first, twenty twenty five.
That correct?
I thought Brenda expressed interest on this and I was gonna take the two other.
This would be the time to correct that.
Commissioner Simmons?
I mean, but Brenda, I want to make sure that she's available.
Commissioner Simmons.
I'd be willing.
But, are you listening?
No.
Go ahead. Commissioner Wiltse.
Um, I think maybe a whole meeting, um, didn't you express interest in becoming on the Asabo?
Asabo Valley Committee Mental Health.
Yeah, and then I was gonna take over the
Yes.
Two other ones.
Yes. That is correct.
So we need a correction on this resolution?
Just would insert Commissioner Simmons in place of Commissioner Wiltse.
Yeah, and again, Commissioner Simmons, I believe that the committee of the whole, I also said if you're unable to attend the meeting, I think they're at five PM, just let me know and I will attend for you.
I would also.
For mental health?
Yeah.
You gotta do that, but that's alright. Unless you want to be on it, doesn't matter to me.
I will, I will be a stand. Uh, uh.
Okay, I'll do it, yeah.
I'll be standing if needed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the resolution to appoint Commissioner Simmons to the Saddle Mental Health.
I support it. Any further discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed. Motion carries item seven F, resolution to appoint a member to the Northern Michigan Counties Association. This resolution is sponsored by the sponsored by the committee of the whole. Ogumaw County is a member of, participant of the thirty-four county Northern Michigan Counties Association. The Board of Commissioners wishes to continue to participate, continue its participation in Northern Michigan Counties Association through a representative appointed to serve in that capacity. Approval of this resolution will appoint District Three County Commissioner Charles Wiltse to the Northern Michigan Counties Association for the remainder of the calendar year twenty twenty three.
I'll make a motion to appoint, uh, Charles Wiltse. Think you ought to correct the spelling of his first name though. Um, to the Northern Michigan.
I'll second.
Court, uh, motion made by Commissioner Scott, support by Commissioner Mahew. Any further discussion? Commissioner, uh, Wiltse, you're in an agreement with this, correct?
Correct.
All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed. Motion carries item G, or excuse me, A, A, new business, resolution to appoint a member to the Special Opiate Settlement Advisory Committee. This resolution is, is presented on behalf of the Special Opiate Settlement Advisory Committee on June twenty second, twenty twenty three, the Board of Commissioners approved resolution twenty-three dash nine-two to establish and appoint members to the Special Opiate Settlement Advisory Committee. Appointed member Gale Huey determined she's unable to serve on the advisory committee. Approval of the resolution will appoint Tricia Ziegler to represent the West Branch Road City Area School District for a term to expire December thirty first, twenty twenty four. I'll make that motion. Is there any support?
I'll support.
Report from Commissioner Scott, discussion? She's in agreement, agreement with this?
Yes, but ironically cannot attend tonight's meeting, but.
Yes.
She's a assistant principal.
She's a principal.
Principal now?
Yeah, she was last year too as well.
Okay.
Mr. Ziegler.
Used to be the nanny of the way.
Any further discussion?
Oh.
All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed. Motion carries item eight B, claims. We have a total of two hundred and one thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. Who reviewed claims?
I always wanted to.
Brenda and I did.
Who would like to take?
I filled in for Charlie and.
Commissioner Scott, you're the floor?
I didn't really see anything that was way out of proportion. There were some appropriations that had to be taken care of. You know, we had to pay them lawyers for some lawsuits and things like that. Uh, so I, I really didn't see anything way out of the ordinary.
Commissioner Simmons?
No, I didn't either. I, I saw some high dollar items, but some of them were there last, and from the treasurer's office where they have all those, um, title checks and, um, software and stuff like that going on, so although that was considerable amount of money, it's understandable. So.
Questions, commissioners?
Well, I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion from
Support.
Commissioner Simmons with support from Commissioner Scott. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltse.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Item C, proposal of nature park, well, I think we had this resolution resolution, resolution to accept proposal for nature park water supply project. Um, would somebody like to explain this? Commissioner Scott?
Sure. Well, uh, the, the hall up there just has a well that is not working. It's an old well, an old steel well in the back room. It has not been working, um. So we, we asked the administrator, put it out for bid. Uh, we've received a bid, we've, uh, that we received from one contractor, two different bids, one to to use the existing well up near the house and run a line down to the, to the, um, hall, or for about a thousand dollars more, put a new well in. Um, we had a Parks and Rec meeting yesterday, there was no quorum. Uh, we had a little discussion about it. Uh, I, I think, I think having a new well down at the, at the, uh, we have a new well at the house already. And that helps, that supplies the water for the, uh, deer also. This would give the hall a, a, a separate, separate water supply, I think would be good. Something we've talked about in past years is the possibility of maybe a few RV sites over there to maybe attract seasonal RVers that would want to help with with, uh, duties around the park and things like that. And if that was to happen, this extra water supply would help. Uh, there is a five oh one C three group, the deer, the friends of the deer refuge. Uh, they're willing to help out with supplemental money this year, so that this won't be paid by taxpayers. So I, I'd like to see this go ahead. And the only reason bringing it up tonight is we, we moved the committees, the whole meeting next week to another week. Then we wouldn't vote on it for another week. I'd like to be able to pass this, give the contractor more time this year to put it in the schedule first.
I just have a few questions because I'm not overly familiar with it there. You said the hall.
Yes.
What do they use the hall for?
We rent it out. Um, it, it's a very nice hall. If you ever been up there or you should go up and take a look. Um, we have a lot of projects to do in, in, in the hall. Um, for one thing, there's no heat in there, so we don't get to use it in the winter time. Uh, there's just been no heat put in it at all. Uh, but there's, you have full-size bathrooms with multiple toilets, I guess we'd call it, and, um, uh, it's a very, it's, I don't know what the square footage of the hall is, but we have very large kitchen area. It could be used as a meeting room in itself. Uh, it is rented this weekend, matter of fact, and they're running the hose down from the house to, to supply some water. So, um.
It doesn't sound very good.
Well, yeah, and, and it's a, it's a diamond in the rough up there. Years ago, I've been to quite a few different weddings and things like that up there. We have a sufficient parking lot. Uh, or I know that, uh, uh, in past years, there's been, uh, there's horseshoe pits out there. There's a big yard. Uh, it's like I say, a diamond in the rough up there. It's really neat.
So there is been water in the hall, it's just?
It's been water. It's an old steel well that's in the back room. It was probably drilled and then built around with an addition, you know? And it just, it's been failing in the last few years and, uh, uh, this would be a new outdoor, outside, you know, uh, five-inch well and I think this would be a great addition.
You guys have the finances to support this.
Well, like I say, uh, if whatever the budget doesn't cover, the five one C three group is, is willing to put up money. That's, that's why the five oh one C three was, was, uh, was made just to supplement cost to the to the, uh, nature park.
And this was put out to bid and this is the only one I can't, wells are really expensive nowadays.
Yes, they are.
They're small.
Go ahead, Commissioner Wiltse.
Um, how much money is in your balance in the five oh one C?
I think it's around sixty thousand dollars.
Really?
Yeah.
You know, we're seeing this absolute you know, all these bids that we're putting out, nobody's bidding them, you know, and I'm just thinking to myself, we have a brand-new five-inch well supply in the house. And there is this hall that's gonna get some use. Into trench a line down to the hall and in, and their bid is almost ten thousand dollars? I mean, it's just a shame that we're well, seems awful excessive.
They're not looking to trench it and they're looking
That was another option. The first option was to use the new five-inch well for the house and trench, uh,
That's what I would think they would do.
To me.
Makes sense.
I mean, in my head, I'm
Well.
hearing some, some numbers and that ten thousand dollars, same price as the well.
Let me, let me, let me clarify. The, the, they will replace Steve, uh, he put this well in, Roy Simmons and son, put this, put the well in at the house and they did it for the cost of the material. The labor was a donation to the, to the park.
How long ago was that?
About two, three years ago. So and he put in a used pump. So in order to feed everything, you have to put a new pump into. So if you see the breakdown on what new pumps cost, you know, it's, is that too? Uh, I think just for future future use and if we were to go with maybe some RV, something like that. Um, the house does supply the water for the deer also. And not just drinking water, but we, uh, we sprinkler the, the lots and things like that, keep the dust down and hopefully grow a little bit of grass too, at the same time. So. This isn't just the one meeting thing that we've talked about. We've talked about it because these bids were out for months.
It just makes you wonder if people are that, they're that short-staffed, you know, it, it makes you wonder why we are only getting one bid back and typically it's from people that we actually know you're with.
Well, it's just like you guys were talking with the transit.
Right, that's what I
Statewide, you know, you know, everybody's busy. I mean, they don't even have time to throw you a bid that's outrageous because why take all the time to do that if they're not gonna get it?
If they don't have the time to do it.
Yeah, all these companies are busy. I would think, I would think that project there alone, just, just the local companies within fifty miles would have, would have bid, but if there's like oil gas, Spence Brothers out of Saginaw, something like that, but, um, if there's busy and they are, there's a lot of building going on, of major construction. So.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yeah, have you talked to other members of the board that were not there?
We have in the past. I mean,
No.
I say this wasn't just yesterday.
Yeah, it was just yesterday, so the rest of the board
Been out a month ago, we talked about it before.
I understand that, I'm speaking, let me finish, please. So what you're saying is you're speaking for the board and the rest of the board, because there wasn't a quorum, hasn't had an opportunity to have a discussion about this, is that correct?
Yep.
So you're speaking for the entire board?
Majority of, yes.
So if we approve this, I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna add on to that. If we approve this, is it for sure approved or does it go back to you guys for the file saying?
It, whatever, whatever comes out of the committee has to come to the commissioners. Commissioners have the final word on, on this expenditure.
So once this is, if, if this is approved through us, then, then it's a go-ahead. On your guys' end.
Right. Right.
Commissioner Simmons?
So you're speaking for the entire board to, to, to go this route? And maybe they want to go a different route?
I doubt it, but I guess it's the entire board except you.
Because there was not a quorum yesterday, how many were present?
There was three of us.
How many's on the board?
Uh, six, right now.
And you guys had this discussion yesterday, you just couldn't vote on it, is that correct?
Right. We didn't have a meeting. Because we had no
I couldn't vote on it because
We didn't, we didn't even have a forum.
So you guys discussed this yesterday?
Yeah, well, yes, yes, we did.
Is everybody in favor?
Couldn't vote?
Well, you, you had a question about whether it was, and then you, when out of the room, came back in and told me that it did include a pump and, and all the hookup and everything else.
The well did, yes.
Yes.
Yes, for the building itself.
Right.
Yes. But my understanding was that the house is gonna have to have a new pump also, but I could be mistaken.
Well, it could be, but that can be a whole different subject.
Right. Tim, Tim, do you have recommendations on this, I guess, since, since this was not approved through the, the rec, the Parks and Rec? I mean, I don't see a problem with this on myself personally, but as far as
Right, I mean, the, the Parks Commission's on record saying they need to do something out there, so yeah, I'm satisfied as far as the bidding process went, just exactly what you're calling it.
Okay.
Um, you know, I, I understand the awkwardness, the Parks Commission not having a forum yesterday. But if there were other competing proposals from other vendors, I would probably suggest waiting until the Parks Commission can review them all, but there's only one. And it's just that one, uh, vendor happened to submit two different proposals. This one is, uh, um, obviously the higher priced, so I'm confident if there was discussion later on, if we get out there and there's a decision that while the other well can be used, um, well, you've gotten enough, as far as the cost is concerned, enough has been approved here to proceed.
To proceed either way.
So, short answer is yes, I'm, I'm comfortable if the board wants to move forward.
I would frame a motion to say allocate this number to fix the water supply. And if Brenda, you figure out that the other members want to do it a different way, we can do it a different way. But let's allocate this money so that we can give a heads, heads up to the contractor now.
And then you guys can make the decision of what you want to do.
Is that something you want to hear?
No, once it's passed here, it's done.
Or you just don't want to do it at all?
No. Hold on, guys. Commissioner Simmons, what's, what would you be satisfied with?
It doesn't. I can't say one way or another because there's a conflict here. I just
It's not like I'm not asking you to vote, I'm asking you your
I know. I already gave it.
I'm asking for clarification on it, now that Tim spoke. Do you disagree with that?
I can't really say what we're
This is allocating the money for the project. It's up to you guys.
And I won't make a
No, no, it doesn't matter. No, no, come on.
We have the motion on the floor.
Move forward. I'll make a motion to accept this. Let's move forward.
We have a motion, Commissioner Scott, with support from Commissioner Wiltse. Any further discussion?
Well, we're, we're, we're making, we're making a vote to allocate this in the level of money that
Correct.
the water issue.
Yep, you made the, you made the motion. Commissioner Wiltse supported it, nothing's changed there. Any further discussion? Mr. Mahew?
No.
Roll call vote.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltse.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
She's
Absolutely.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yeah. Item nine, is there any unfinished business, commissioners? Item ten, Administrator slash Controllers Report.
You've got the detailed report on iPads, but there's some items on there I want to bring your attention now that, um, um, just to make sure your order. The first, we had meetings last week with, uh, Whitmore Prescott Schools and the West Branch Road City School over the, uh, school resource deputy agreement that we have. It's a very good meeting, very productive, I thought. Um, I, I learned quite a bit in terms of what the schools are doing to evaluate their programs. They shared that information with the sheriff and the under sheriff, and that was very productive. Um, we did talk about the hours in the contract. The contract very clearly states, uh, the, for, uh, the uh, cost of the contract, we are providing eight hours of service. That eight hours can be flexed if we have agreement between the sheriff and the school to do that. Sheriff expressed to the schools his reluctance to do that for, you know, very valid reasons. He doesn't want to leave a gap where, you know, opportunities for bad things to happen, totally understandable. The schools also understand, though, if they do need the officer, say, in an after-school activity, that that will come at an additional cost in addition to what we've contracted for with each of the schools. So let's just, for example, if the school wants to have a school resource officer at a football game, uh, either they can flex the time with the agreement of the sheriff, or they're going to need to have an agreement ahead of time, uh, to have the officer there for the additional hours. It might be three, it might be four, I don't know how long, uh, one of those things, uh, might go on. But that would come at an additional cost, and we did talk about what that hourly rate is with the school, but that agreement would have to be made in advance. And then we would invoice the school for those additional hours. And I think that gets to the heart of the concerns that we had here about the compensatory time and the overtime, uh, for those positions. Very confident after those conversations that, uh, between the sheriff and the schools, that that's gonna happen. Uh, and obviously, if it, uh, doesn't happen and it shows up in the budget, I'll be knocking on somebody's door, but bottom line is, I think there was understanding between both parties about why that's necessary. So I'm looking forward to that, uh, being ironed out as we move forward. Uh, the contract actually requires us to meet once a year to go over the, the program itself anyway, so that meeting that we had satisfied that portion too. Uh, you should be proud to know that both schools are very pleased with what they're getting. I was very impressed that, uh, West Branch Road City School actually had a, a format, an evaluation format, that they were able to share with the sheriff and the officer about areas that they want to see, uh, you know, more attention paid to and other areas that are going quite well. Um, it's very, very well done, I thought. Um, I want to speak for the sheriff, but, um, I mean, we were all kind of nodding, this, this was good. So that, uh, format likely gets, uh, transferred to Whitmore Prescott as well. So very productive meeting, uh, in that regard.
May I ask one question?
If the chair allows it.
May I ask a question?
Uh, just go ahead.
About the resource.
Good.
Well, if they have to, if they have to work at a football game or whatever, uh would there be overtime involved in that? Sheriff Gilbert?
Well, we're working it out, where the school will be paying for that.
Right, so they will be paying for the time and a half.
That's what we're working on.
Okay, thank you, that's all I need to know.
Uh, second item uh that you'll see in in that report concerns NOVA time, we learned that NOVA time has been bought by another company, I believe it's uh UKCK, I forget the acronym.
UKG?
UK. Keep thinking KFC and that's not right. What this means for us, um, we we actually sat through a webinar uh this last week about what the new format's going to look like, and it's almost mirrors what we've got now, the colors are different on the uh homepages, but um other than that, all the data that we need to see, then some is available. Uh, the new system, uh that's going to be replacing it uh uh continues to have that bridge between the payroll system and the over, in the V S N A system, so we're losing nothing there in the transit. One thing we will lose is the use of the current time clocks, and we will have to purchase new time clocks uh to be compatible with the new uh company. Um, they are enhanced a little bit from what we have now, but I'm not so sure that the enhancements are necessarily, you know, a big sail in the dust, but other than the fact that we have to uh install those. Now, there is some training that needs to be done during the transition uh and as an incentive, the new company is waiving all fees for that transition. And the transition really is just uh, as we went through when we first uh installed the system, it's just teaching everybody the nuances, the little changes, and they're not much, they really aren't. They programmed uh three months to do that, I don't think it's going to take us three months to do it, I will, there will be some trial and error initially, but I don't believe there's going to be any um, any big uh, you know, gap in terms of what we're able to do. And we initially looking at the calendars and what's available with the company are looking at the second quarter of the calendar year, so on April, May, June timeline next year, to actually go through the transition itself. They've suggested that we try to get in early and these transitions have to take place over the next three years. They're suggesting we try to get in early because there's going to be a big rush at the end as everybody puts off and doing the transition. Uh, so um they called us, we were one of their first clients because we were one of the most recently installed clients, and they just want to make sure that we're still satisfied uh with the system when it's all said and done, so that would be the earliest that we'd want to do it, that gets us away from the open enrollment period, which tends to be a heavy workload time on uh the HR's component, and it gets us away from the elections later, which is going to take our current person away from uh, you know, virtually everything else to work on election, so that's the sweet spot. Um, all of this um, just just in terms of the uh transition itself, uh the NOVA time system will no longer be functioned or supported after three years. So this isn't really an option, but we are guaranteed that the prices, because we signed a five-year contract with NOVA time, that pricing structure will be maintained uh throughout the period, there'll be no increase for this. IT Director suggested that we try to get another year or two out of it. Well, when I talk to them next, I think it's a good idea, so we'll see what we can do. Um, we're not going to make or break the company, so I don't think it's that big of an ask. And that way any inconvenience that we uh might experience, I think that's good compensation. So that's coming, uh more on that as things progress, the time clock change out. They've already sent us the invoice for, but I will hold because it's going to be a twenty twenty-four expense, I'll hold it till next year, yeah, and then we'll solidify the change out uh for the clocks. I I know uh Commissioners David and uh Simmons, uh we talked, or like I say, late last year about voluntary benefits. Um, we finally, after uh meeting with our employee groups and working through MESA, have finally got that uh open enrollment period now available to our employees, so this is voluntary benefits that they pay for out of payroll deduction. There's no additional anything for the county to do other than the, you know, do the payroll deductions that we're already doing for things like health insurance. But it's very good for the employees, uh majority of our employees are already enrolled in MESA. So they can go online uh between now and the end of the month and sign up for any of the programs they want. Uh, and they're in, that's it, that's all it takes. So that initial period expires on August twenty-eighth, but when we do open enrollment at the end of the year for health insurance, employees will be able to sign up then as well, so there'll be two opportunities here in the next few months for employees who are interested, and then we'll do open enrollment annually. So if there are any changes or any additions, employees, well, they can, they can do those. Been brought a bottle of water, I can tell that. Another meeting that I had uh just uh this week with uh the city manager of West Branch and two representatives from the EDC. They've identified uh housing as a major issue for the county, Commissioner Wilti is on a committee now that was recently formed to address housing issues. Suggestion was made by our EDC reps is that we consider uh uh establishing a housing commission that will focus on programs like the Mishra programs that allow for new construction, building new uh housing for I'm forgetting the terminology they use, but it's neither low income nor high income, it's that middle area that we're really missing in in our communities. Also talked with Leanne Fisher of our housing program. She expressed initially a willingness to assist with that in any way that she can, and that's a big positive for us. She's already familiar with the area. Very familiar with the granting agencies and their processes, and I think opens up her uh at least, I think, a better chance of success in applying for some of those grants. Those grants would be pretty sizable, we're talking, you know, potentially the millions, depending on what's going to be built. Give you an idea of how difficult this has been, you might recall, I think it was last year, the city set aside some land on M thirty where they were going to develop a housing project, and they're all ready to go and everything lined up, and their developer backed out because they did a cost benefit analysis, they couldn't make it work anymore. Uh, and that's the kind of thing that a lot of communities are faced with, yet there's a a project going on in Grayling right now with funding from Mishra about the size of the project they were talking about here. And the idea with the EDC is if we were to open the opportunity up to our our housing commission to go after some of these funds, perhaps we can make this more attractive to our developers to offset some of the costs we have building, one of the big issues that they had was infrastructure, and we know that, to build a street and put a sewer line out there was over a million dollars by itself. Uh, so this might help just in terms of promoting a project or two, thank you. Thanks, that's a hundred percent. So that is, I think, a positive thing, there'll be more on that to come, we're just in the very early stages, but there was definitely interest on part of the city and the EDC to help that happen, and I'm um optimistic about the the new regional group that's been put together as well uh to help us get some leverage to get some of this accomplished in the community. Not something that's going to happen overnight, but it is something I think that warrants our attention, particularly given the growth that we've seen here in the last few years.
And a hundred percent or an hundred proof?
It just says a hundred percent, I can't read it.
What was that project that 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 came to town, the EDC has all the information on that for the housing, what was that called? All that study? Yes, that's where all the information, if anybody ever needs it, as far as the housing needs in Ogama County, that's very interesting, that is it.
That was done in two thousand eighteen.
Yeah.
And it forms an, just an excellent foundation to go after some of these grants, it it has the data in there that proves the need. And uh just if it's structured properly, I think that we should be able to get to the front of the line on some of these programs. It's um a good time to be looking at it too, because um you're following state at all, and the state budgets, they have a lot of ARPA silos that they're trying to to get projects for and get money out the door, so uh if we're prepared, I think uh and we're prepared and we have somebody with the experience like Leanne Fisher uh to go after those grants, again, I think our chances of success are pretty good. So i- it's just something that um, you know, we say fast track, we're we're not obviously able to do anything like today or even next month, but maybe perhaps by the end of the year, get that structure in place and and get aggressive on on pursuing those funds. Now, another meeting, it's been a busy week, another meeting I um had was with the uh material recovery facility director at Isabella County. What uh Isabella County is doing ahead of the uh new solid waste management planning efforts is trying to line up counties who might be interested in directing recyclables to their facility. Um, they they've got a, you know, decent program, I'm very familiar with it, um just in terms of how they collect. It's good conversation, uh and I don't think it's going to end up being any problem for Ogama County to say, yes, we would be open to our uh recyclables going to that facility. I'm a little leery of um, just a couple of lines in the letter they sent um, you know, concerning the funding of the facility. Um, the facility itself in Isabella County has actually made money, if you will, or actually brought in revenue in excessive expenses only one time that I know of in the last twenty-five years. So Isabella County's been subsidizing that uh operation uh through its general fund to the tune of anywhere between one and three hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, and just reading between the lines is that I suspect at some point, well, we would, if we want to participate, we'll be asked to make contributions to help make that facility viable and perhaps expand it. Um, but another approach might be to just simply, if we want to do, say, a curbside program in the county here, is just allow the private haulers to deal with that. And if they want to have uh, you know, a fee for going through recycling, well, just let the private sector handle it and not commit monies from uh our general fund to support that. We'll see, wanting to be um explored there yet, but it is nice to be invited to the table as they have uh conversations in the next few months about what form that might take, and this is uh maybe a bit premature, but I appreciate that they're getting the groundwork laid down, we haven't even seen the uh initial uh directive from the state yet to begin these conversations, and we know it's coming, but until that letter arrives with a check uh to undertake the the project, um it would be premature for us to commit to anything. But it is uh, you know, nice to be invited to the table for these initial discussions anyway, and we'll keep you informed as that progresses. Yeah, a couple more things, so just very briefly, and we were talking about the well proposal today and the lack of vendors, well, the nature park had two other RFPs that were issued at the same time. One to replace the lighting in the hall at the nature park and the other to replace the roof on the facility at the nature park. Uh, we were able to identify vendors for both um at least a half dozen in each case and sent RFPs directly to those vendors and advertised in the paper and posted on the webpage. Got zero response. Again, just to give you an idea of how how the 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 whole uh you know, construction arena is is right now, it's it's tough to find a vendor. So the next step for the Parks Commission, because they have gone through the RFP process, um that does open the opportunity for them to contact any vendor directly and say, okay, tell us how much, and we'll bring that to the board uh for approval, if that's even needed, if, for instance, the lighting project comes in under the five thousand dollar threshold, we we can handle it administratively. I have no idea, it's not my field, I have no idea what's involved in this. Uh, but the idea that was out for RFP should certainly cover any eventuality, but unfortunately, no proposals. And finally, well, two things, uh for those who weren't here early, uh Ray has in his possession now a signed contract to go ahead with that major project out of transit after many months of review uh and uh edits uh from through the state and with our attorneys, uh we're ready to go, so, you know, it's great news on that front. Uh, and then finally, just mentioned earlier to the opioid committee, their inaugural meeting is tonight, five thirty out at the airport, I'm looking forward to some very good information from MAC. Uh, and I I think, you know, frankly, the, some of the uh calls that Kelly has made to the members, I think we've got some people pretty excited about this, I'm really looking forward to good things coming out of that committee. Um, we did, um, uh, you know, you approved already the resolution for the Walgreens settlement. Uh, that'll bring in about uh four hundred, uh, believe it was something like four hundred eighty thousand more uh to the init- opioid uh initiative. And uh we believe are going to get another payment here if it hasn't already arrived uh from one of the other settlements, so we're going to have roughly four hundred thousand right in the uh fund immediately to start uh using to help offset some of these negative impacts that we've uh seen promulgate, so uh again, very exciting time uh for that group. So.
Any, any questions for Tim Commissioners? I I had one of that, that time clock, is that the total for all the time clocks that have to be replaced, the four thousand seven hundred eighty dollars, or is that just, is that?
I believe that's for, there's two of them that we have right now, and that's, I believe, for both.
And obviously, we didn't see this coming as far as the NOVA time.
It it happens all the time, um we've, we've had other uh vendors who've been bought out, uh Seamless Docs has been bought out by Gov something. And that product has been enhanced, I was able to get in there to do some other forums here this week, and it's uh much more user friendly, so they're, they're going in the right direction.
Questions?
Um, I just got one thing, uh so I know we're all looking forward to that meeting meeting tonight. I think it's going to be a great start for us, but have you heard anything back from the Attorney General about the body scanner?
I have not, but Amy Dolsky, who will be there tonight, uh is is really explored this already, while I don't have a direct answer for us. She has direct uh experience dealing with two other counties that have done this, might be a very good thing to bring up tonight, and she can uh relate what's what's happening there, what's the latest?
For the body scanner, yeah. Commissioner Scott, any questions?
No, I don't.
Commissioners?
Um, item eleven, elected officials and department heads, clerk?
Brett Gilner, you're Ogama County Clerk, um, I just have a couple election little tidbits, um, I have two election trainings coming up. One next week that is actually for the local clerks as well, that I've invited all of them to, I'm over in Iasko County. It is from the Bureau of Elections. Um, so if you guys do have any meetings this week, you can reiterate that to your clerks, that'd be a good training to go to, uh if they can't, what?
I'm sorry?
The seventeenth. And I ask for county, and I have the um location and all that information. Um, and then my County Clerks Association, uh the following week, we're going to have a whole day of training on election stuff, so we should have more information on the nine-day early voting, um how that looks. Should be, I'm going to be in a better position in two weeks to talk about that more educatedly. Um, and then I'll be able to share, I have been in contact with Don Colhannick, um, our attorney with making the contract with the local townships, I've heard back from the majority of them about doing the nine days early here. Um, everybody that has talked to their board is in agreeance that they would like to do it here at the county. Um, just waiting to hear back from final decisions on the townships that have not had their meetings yet this month. Um, that is it.
Commissioner?
Good morning, everyone. Karen Pecalozzi, Ogama County Treasurer. Um, I'll be brief this morning, I attended the Michigan Association of County Treasurers Conference this week. Gained, gained some new knowledge, did some networking, it was a nice experience at K H and Midland. And I have an upcoming land bank meeting that'll be held August sixteenth. Charlie, I sent you, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wilti, um, sent you an email with uh my packet of information, we'll be looking over the grant agreement. Before we agree to sign that, and we can start moving forward with our first project. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, do you have any updates?
Warren?
Morning.
I'm Spencer, IT Director, um, in your iPads, you have the results, redacted, sorry, of the penetration testing that was done on our network. Compliments of Mike Fowler's work with the state of Michigan to secure the funding. The company found four very minor issues and one of them, one of them was external, the other three were internal. Um, the external issue has been resolved, and they were unable to basically compromise anything because of the other checks and balances that we have in place. Um, the cost of the project was fourteen thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty cents. I checked yesterday, we haven't been reimbursed yet, I did follow up with Mike and I haven't heard back, I know he's on the meeting here. But um I, that's basically, I believe, in the hands of the state, so we could be waiting a while for that. Um, Ogama County is considered to be strong, and like I said, they were unable to escalate anything because of the checks and balances that are in place. So Ogama County is considered to have successfully passed a penetration test, which I was very happy to hear. I didn't know how we stood, um, can only do what we can do, and it's happy to hear that. Do you have any questions in regards to the penetration testing?
That that area is blacked out.
That's the results, it's our vulnerabilities.
Okay, so obviously, we don't want that out there to the public.
Yeah, basically, be like telling me that, oh, yeah, my window's broken.
Makes sense.
I mean, I'll be more than happy to discuss it, just on a public meeting where we're posting it on YouTube and what.
That's fair. I just want a certification.
Yeah, it's they were they were pretty minor issues, so I was happy to hear that.
And then I see you also gave us the YouTube view stats.
Yep, that's next on my list, and I actually threw another, no, go for it. I actually threw something else in there. I reached out to Brock, I was kind of curious, last time I did this, I did it off the percent of our population. Well, obviously, that's birth to eighteen years, which I don't imagine we get an overwhelming amount of youth that watch our YouTube videos. So I asked her for the percentage of registered voters, and I was kind of surprised to see the number. I don't know how accurate this really is. So according to the population census, we've got twenty thousand seven hundred and seventy residents of Ogumaw County, that was in two thousand twenty. The clerk's current registered voters is eighteen thousand five hundred and twelve, which leaves a difference of two thousand two hundred and fifty-eight. I, my next thing, I wanted to know the results, was to reach out to the schools and ask them what their enrollment was. And I don't know if Woodmore Prescott, how they would provide that information, because they obviously cover two counties. I don't know if they would even know, but I if anybody wants to know the actual enrollment, I will reach out if you if you want to know that information.
I think that's a great testament to people not filling out their census.
Correct.
So you re- repeat that again, I guess, I just want to make sure I understood. The residence total you have is twenty thousand seven hundred and seventy, that's from all residents, there's no age there, you're talking about?
Yep, the two thousand twenty census, that was the information that they gathered.
And registered voters is eighteen thousand.
Yep.
Okay.
So it leaves twenty-two fifty-eight. Yeah, correct.
And you, if you went to the school, that doesn't, that wouldn't include, you know, newborns to like four years old either.
I don't even know if that number is in the ballpark. I couldn't tell you how many users in Ogumaw County.
Well, I can, from past experience, looking over voter rolls in different townships, I've seen the same name in two different township. You know, renters renters get to, you don't have to be a property owner to be a voter.
Correct.
So you're a renter, you file here in this township, and then you move. They don't just call up township and say, hey, cancel me off the list, you know, they just move. And then they'll register in another township.
You can only be registered to vote in one town, you can only be registered to vote one place.
Really? I've seen the list.
Looking at these YouTube, I'm surprised by looking, I mean, these are numbers are very low. I mean, some of these, some of these views were high for a few of the meetings, but then others I seen were like thirteen, how sad.
And I included the agenda, I included the agendas in there, the May fourth meeting, obviously, that was the high banks.
Yeah.
High banks generated a lot of views, which is good, in my eyes.
It was a hot topic.
Community does care about property.
And then some of them are down to seven views, one one view October, it's just so sad, that's all.
Well, it tells me that the the latest two two thousand twenty-three has gained more watchers, so people are getting in tune to watching it more and more. I don't know, every township meeting I go to, I I tell them that it's available.
Today?
So, you know, I advertise it, that it's available out there. Of course, those are hits, because if I look at it twice, it's two hits, you know. But still, I think it's a good thing. Is there any way to tell how many hit us on Zoom?
I could look that up, but I I I can't answer that question. I can I can look, but I can tell you it's
Well, I can tell you today.
A lot of views, some, they're not a lot of joiners sometimes.
Well, I'd really like to see it between the morning meetings and the evening meetings.
I can see if I can find that information.
Something like that, you know, and seasonal also.
Seasonal.
Well, I mean, yeah, you take you take people to go away in the winter, they might still want to look it up, and they're in Florida, they can look it up on Zoom or YouTube. Doesn't matter where you're at.
Not the Zoom.
I know, I know Charlie goes southwest, he he, of course, looks at the, looks at the meetings, you know.
I didn't include it in this report, but on the YouTube, I was kind of shocked that a couple of the countries, Norway struck struck some hits.
Oh, yeah.
And I, they're very minimal numbers, I don't know if it was accidental click, or, but I was happy not to see something like Russia on there. They're the microphone. Yeah, they're already in here.
Thank you for that information, Tom, it is appreciated, it's interesting to see.
Thank you, you're welcome. And next thing on my list is email transition. On March fourteenth, the board voted to approve a new email system. Took a little longer than I anticipated, but that was completed the week of June twenty-third. We've had really no issues that I'm aware of, well, mine this morning. I'll tell you one thing I noticed, those are speed, the amount of time that it takes for somebody to receive an email after a send is awesome. It's just, it's there. I mean, I I swear Karen replies before it gets sent. And I'll send something to Karen, and I posted something that she asked me to do, and I get a thank you right back immediately. The calendaring function, I know the treasurer's office is using it, there's a lot of bells and whistles to this that are coming. We'll end up using them in the end, but we're still working through that. Much better than what we had before, and thank you to Karen for some of the funding for that. Any questions in regards to email? GPS update, that was completed in July, all the patrol vehicles are on the map at dispatch. Basically, the board approved a total of fifty-eight thousand three hundred dollars in December of two thousand twenty-two. I was looking at the numbers this morning, we're floating with about half of that left, there's there was an adjustment that Tim had done for some journal entries that changed that, but it was a mistake, and that's that money's going to come back in there, but if, there was only fifty thousand dollars transferred into that line item, and the board actually approved fifty-eight thousand three hundred, but I, it doesn't matter, because we're we're from January till now, we've only used half of it anyways. And then I believe after the next fiscal year, we won't be pulling from that account any longer. I think some of that's going to be absorbed for the, like, the subscription services for the cellular, it's going to go into the sheriff's budget, so there's going to be money left over in that account. And then on top of that, the GPS, the modems in the patrol vehicles have dual cellular service, so it'd be like you having two cell phones, one through Verizon, one through AT&amp;T. And the AT&amp;T is primary, and I've been looking at the Verizon data usage, and it's just not there. We are on a month-to-month with them, we don't have to keep that service going, so if the in another probably month or so, I'll look at it again just to make sure. But if the units in the patrol cars are not utilizing the Verizon, I don't see the reason to pay forty dollars per month per vehicle to keep that going if the AT&amp;T is getting by this night. AT&amp;T has the advantage in an area like South Branch, there is no Verizon service there whatsoever, but AT&amp;T has a tower there. I've been working with the folks at AT&amp;T, and they have put up a new tower over by, like, Newman Park area, and the Verizon one is right next to it. So in a lot of these areas that there's a Verizon service, the AT&amp;T service is there too. With the advantage being South Branch, there's a tower up there that there's no Verizon service. Clear Lake is still one of those areas that really doesn't have either for good coverage, so then why pay for the Verizon to keep going? But other than that, that's all that I have.
You said patrol vehicles are all, is there now GPS in all county vehicles?
Yes, the county, the other county vehicles, like building and zoning transit, they have done that.
Okay, so all of them are done now?
Correct.
Thank you.
They are not on the map at dispatch, but they are tracked elsewhere.
You mean the other county vehicles?
Correct, yeah, like dispatch does not see Brian Stein's pickup, for example. They only see patrol vehicles.
Questions for Tom?
I don't have a question, I just want to say congratulations. I mean, cybersecurity is huge, and we know a breach could cripple us in a second, so, I mean, we saw the numbers, you're doing a good job.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anything else? Is it done on an annual basis, Tom?
The penetration testing? No, this is a one-time shot. I I don't know if there's any money in the future. Obviously, it was a reimbursement thing through Mike, but no, it's not done on an annual basis, first time it's been done that I'm aware of in the history of Ogumaw County IT.
Commissioner Scott, do you have something?
No, I don't have any.
Anything? No, thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Sheriff?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Frank Gilbert, Ogamaw Sheriff, I just have a few things. Tom Howard is now our lieutenant in jail. We hired him up there for a smooth transition, doing a great job for us, very workable. Everybody over there licensed, he's done their fifteen years, so he'll do a great job for us. The roadside pickup is going real well. If you look at the very end of the report on the county corrections, it showed how many many roads were done and how many miles, and it was done yesterday again, so that was July's report. It's going very well. I've I've been getting some good feedback, people are seeing them out there, and they are good, they're well, they're well watched, I mean, security is out there, so we just don't, we don't let them freelance, we're not going to do that, so.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last comment.
I'm sorry.
I didn't hear your last comment.
I just don't want, I don't want these folks to freelance out there, I want them watched, make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do. Like I said before, that we had the approval from all the judges to to move forward on that, so. And then also, we're working towards getting our work release program up and running in the jail, so that will that will generate some more money, some revenue for the jails, so. Things we've got to work out, obviously, we got to get the judges on board, and it sounds like we do have them on board, so we want to generate some more money there. And and I want to say thank you publicly to Tom for all the hard work you've done for our vehicles, GPS, making our officers more safer. Thank you very much. And that's all I have. One other thing, the month of June, I threw out a stat, this is, I did that probably a couple of weeks ago. Just the month of June, you see the complaints that we handled was three hundred and ninety-eight complaints in just that one month, along with everything else that we've done, just just to give a breakdown of what's we're doing out there and how busy we are, and it's steady. Our guys are going, our guys in Dallas doing a very, very good job for us all. I'm well pleased, I'm well pleased. Thank you very much for your support, and is there any questions?
I don't see the complaints on here, I guess, did I miss that? Where's that under? I mean, this is very thorough, I do appreciate it, it's the most thorough I've seen.
It's two, six, eight, it's about ten down from the top, complaints total, three hundred and ninety-eight complaints, and you got breakdown, non-criminal accidents is thirty-three.
It must not be the third one.
Or twenty-four, so it's over and above the three hundred and ninety-eight, if if there's a lot more activity going on in there. And that's just for the month of June, that's really just getting into summer.
That's not, I think the one I'm looking at is from the corrections department, I guess I don't, you're specific, what am I? I don't have it.
I sent that just a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, okay, not on this.
Oh, it's another meeting.
I missed that one.
Yeah, I I didn't get a chance to go over this, because meetings isn't all right in this, but July will be coming up probably soon, and we did that out to your folks. Anyway, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any incident in July?
Okay, yeah, I I remember that, yeah, I remember seeing that. Any, our, Ray, did you want to come up? Give us a, do you have any updates?
Not really.
Are you sure? Congratulations on this, this is a really big deal before you retire, right?
Sitting there way too long.
You've worked very hard on this project.
Are you retiring?
Oh, he said sometime.
Are you retiring?
Sometime.
No.
Congratulations on this.
Thank you, Ray Blamer. Friends and guru. I guess, I'm I'm happy about about the pole barn, you know, we really need it, and all our all our vehicles now will be inside. Safe, secure, it it will get, won't be quite as a issue for our like, Ray Shay for our mechanic in the mornings, he has to go out and clean all the snow off the buses, pull them in, slip and falls and stuff like that, so it'd just be better all the way around. The transit itself is doing good, we do have one driver that's tentatively going to retire next Thursday, supposedly it's going to be her last day, so we're just just waiting to see. And I have a part timer that's willing to step up to full-time to to fill that. I wasn't planning on talking today, so I don't have anything in writing or anything, I just brought in that Miller Construction estimate for the soft and patient, that's, that really does need to get done, it's the bad issue is a problem, no doubt about that.
Well, thank you.
And and when I did talk to Gary, he's, he said in his estimate, he can do metal, or we could do vinyl, or some different types of metal, it's kind of, it covers it all. And there was, are you familiar with Snap Block? I I really wasn't. It's on a building over here by the KFC Hall, it looks very attractive, so we'll have to get together with Gary and make a decision on just what material we want used, so.
Did he say when he needs to know that, Mike?
I'm, I'm going to get him to sign this third-party contract today, and I'll ask him that. We have Wade Promodians, Curtis Middleton is coming to next week's meeting at the airport to discuss some some things that he's got coming up, that he'd like to introduce to Ogumaw County, the transit for putting advertising on our buses. So I didn't know if you would want Gary there too, or just you and I and Gary get together inside what we think is going to be the best avenue to to make the building look to make sure that it still looks nice, you know, when we're done.
I think if we have enough time, I'd like it to go to, he could be there next Thursday.
I'll ask him.
Bring some different samples.
Okay, good idea. I'll ask him that then.
Perfect.
Okay, does anyone have any questions, or?
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you.
Congratulations again, you did a lot of hard work for that.
Not over yet.
Yeah, any other elected officials or department heads on the phone?
Good morning, Mike Bowers, Emergency Management, how are you all today?
Good, hi, Mike.
Good. So, you know, I'm terrible about reporting out to you guys, but yesterday I ran into Commissioner Scott, and he reminded me that you guys were having the meeting this morning, so it might be a great opportunity for me to kind of give you an idea of the things that have been going on over the course of the summer and moving into the fall. So I'll try to be short here. So I've met with our local emergency planning committees and the fire chiefs, and with your blessing, we are going to order one thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars in hazardous materials response equipment through the hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant that I had entered us into again this year. Last week, we combined auxiliary communications with the cert teams, Sheriff's Department EMS and dispatch in order to make sure that the Sasquatch gravel bike race went off without any major complications. We did checkpoints between those different groups, we did checkpoints, and I brought radio communications in out of Lansing through the eight hundred and got a special event channel in order to to be able to monitor the safety of the event, and it went off very well from nine AM until the last last bike finished the fifty miles at one twenty in the afternoon, so I thought that was pretty quick. Emergency management and the cert team are going to be out at the fair this year, we're going to have a booth at the fair, but I also have eight hundred radios and special event channels in order for the Sheriff's Department EMS, the cert, the fair board, and dispatch all to be able to communicate on a special channel, just in case there's something that happens during those five days. We'll be able to have a special communications that's separate from the everyday communication, so that can all move forward. That's a security meeting this this last month, the county security meeting. We scheduled for stop to bleed, run, hide, fight classes, and I'm also going to include an all hazards response class, and this is all in association with all of the hard And this is all in association with uh all of the hard work that was done in the in the building with uh getting stop to bleed kits and first aid kits. And getting uh all of the uh evacuation and shelter in place uh plaques up on the walls. Get the AEDs up and running, uh just all of the the safety stuff that has happened the last twelve months uh in the building. So, um, tho- those are gonna be scheduled in the last week of August. And then we are going to do an active shooter exercise in September. Uh, further information on that will be as it gets closer. Um, in regards to some of the reporting out uh that has went on, um. That I've listened to from the other department heads, uh you can expect Tom's uh reimbursement for the cybersecurity. Probably in November, it's ninety to a hundred and twenty days. Uh, I didn't. It may be a little bit earlier. I wanna say we submitted that in June. Uh, it might have been early July. Um, I am putting in a notice of intent. Uh, with the state of Michigan for a grant to get professional help with our hazard mitigation plan. It is at, it's actually overdue by a year, so we will be getting started in on a hazard mitigation plan. And I will be coming to uh uh county officials and all the township officials. And and other vested partners in order to help with uh getting that all put together. That will have a uh contribution in kind uh element to it. Um, and and we get that with the uh the the hours of county personnel. Uh, giving their uh contributions and their visions of of the safety. Um, as far as the AT&T versus Verizon, I also use AT&T. And uh like uh Tom was saying, that uh you know. I get AT&T everywhere in the county. Um, it can be a little bit spotty up in Clear Lake. Um, but uh, you know, you get nothing from Verizon and Clear Lake. Um, and another advantage, uh all of our first responders, all of our our police EMS and fire. Uh, the emergency management and elected officials who are on AT&T also have the option. Of being able to be uh on FirstNet, and the FirstNet uh gives them the option of the high speed internet. Uh, all the time, uh twenty four seven. Uh, there is no spend down on it. It does not slow down. And uh it uh streamlines during high usage areas, so those people get priority. Um, just to to confer with with Tom there and his vision, so um. There is a new cybersecurity grant program out uh with the state of Michigan. Uh, they have just initiated it literally three weeks ago. There will be more cybersecurity funding available. Uh, we can look at things like uh. Uh, long term maintenance plans, uh Tom and I have spoken about before. And or any equipment, software, hardware that uh he feels that we need to get in order to continue to uh. I have this very high level of cybersecurity. I've done this assessment with uh several counties. Spent a lot of time with this company and uh they they did, they 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 told me that uh. Ogumaw County did very well through their testing, so um. Osalbo Valley Mental Health, um, I know you guys just appointed a commissioner to that uh that group and that committee. Uh, last week, uh we met down with uh down at Standish Max Hospital with Mike Codley. And he is working with DOC to try to see whether or not we can turn Standish Max. Uh, facility into an inpatient mental health facility. Um, I don't know if you guys are aware, but uh people from northeastern Michigan. Uh, quite often sit in an ER for literally several days waiting for admission into a mental health facility someplace. And sometimes that mental health facility is in Illinois or Indiana or Wisconsin. Uh, very far away, and that cannot be healthy for uh our mentally disturbed people. Uh, being that far separated from their families, so um, yeah, you know, we're working on maybe being able to make that happen also. Um, I think that's all I have. Sorry for being so long winded. Any questions?
Thanks, Mike. Questions, right?
I'd like to thank Mike also. Thank you, Mike, for the grant for that cybersecurity. Appreciate all you do.
Thank you all. Uh, it's a, it's a very big pleasure to be able to work for you all.
Thanks, Mike. Any other elected officials or department heads on the phone? Managers from the floor commissioners. Think there are any motions for adoption? Commissioners report, Commissioner Simmons.
Uh, I went to the NEMSCO meeting uh last Friday in Sheboygan. That was a long trip. It was a nice trip. They talked about uh grants being out there uh. For uh improvement on um housing, and they also talked about uh. Them raising the poverty income level. From what it is now to a higher level, so try and make more people uh eligible to reach grants. So, I don't know how high that is going to be, but I know that um. Housing will be having a meeting today, and I think we're gonna be discussing up to date. But I'll know more later about that, and uh if you wanna know it before next time we meet, you can talk to Lee Fisher about it. She'll know that answer. So, I thought that was very good news. And NEMSCO does a lot of things, and um I'm glad that was brought up. So I've already talked to a couple of people. To talk to Leanne. About this, cuz um. They they could use the help. So, but sometimes their their income is just above what the the level is now, and the level is very small right now. But they're talking about increasing that. That's uh, that's the latest. That's all I have.
Commissioner Mayhew?
I went to Commons. They got their uh. Election Center. Resealed and they uh was working under sewer line. I went to West Branch last night. And they're adopting a deal on temporary sign removal. Before the next election. And Commissioner Scott stayed, stopped there last night and told him he was gonna do all he could to get him that. Baseball deal straightened out. And that's all I have on baseball. Feel the dreams or?
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Scott?
Yeah, um, went to the road commission meeting. Uh, they laid out their twenty twenty four capital outlay draft. Looks like they're gonna be up around one point seven million in purchases next year. Uh, law enforcement, we talked to the sheriff, undersheriff, but the parking lot repairs over to the sheriff's office to gated corrections. Carol, their new secretary's doing very well with the social media posts. And the GPS in the cars update. Parks and Rock, like we talked about earlier, we had no quorum. We're gonna try again next week. West Branch City, I went to their meeting. Their their lawyers worried up a boardness for building inspector. Uh, they're engaging in a contract with Red E Charging. With uh like uh for electric charging stations, uh two, possibly four. In town and there's a three cents per kilowatt kickback or payback, I guess. Not kickback, but payback uh to the city. There's no cost to put these in. Uh, the contractor's gonna do it. Uh, Foster Township, they're making a lot of improvements uh to their park and maintenance. Their fire department had hose hose testing done. They're purchasing a three hundred gallon. Diesel fuel tank for the fire department, and their board discussed the nine day voting quite a bit. The clerk had talked to the Bureau of Elections and had got almost no answers back either. And they asked me about it and I just, I explained to them this was a proposal that the voters voted for. And now. The state government saddles everybody with the task of doing it. Well, and like most things, no rules come out ahead i- in the beginning, you know? So we'll hear more, hopefully. Rick gets down to the county clerk thing and we get some better answers. I'm just glad to know that we don't have any elections this year, so that we don't have to go through it. Um, uh Ogumaw Township, the the West Branch City manager and DPW manager were there. And talked about a grant that the cities may be able to get. For a water system improvements and then connecting, connecting up with township system. And uh, so this is an ongoing matter. Um. Mills Township, I went over there for Commissioner Wiltsey and filled in and gave a monthly report when uh. Charlie asked me to go over, I totally forgot about Foster Township, so I. I'm glad that they met at six o'clock, so I could just drop off a little report to them and then split and get up to Foster, so. Uh, I didn't hang around to hear the things. Uh, but the the sheriff was there and uh I think if Charlie needs to know anything, he just has to share a piece. And uh. I told him at Foster that you were tied up in Mills and you couldn't get there, but.
I'll try to get up there.
I did ask about ORB patrol and they said there is a lot more ORB patrol. They're seeing it. And then West Branch Township, as Commissioner Mayhew had mentioned. I went in yesterday morning to pay property taxes at West Branch Township and their clerk and. And supervisor asking me about the Ogumaw Recreation Property and where we're at on that. And uh, I said, well, I'd look into it for you. And I called, spoke to Tim over the phone a little bit. And then later in the afternoon, Jim Lucas, the chairman of the Ogumaw Recreation. Called me and asked me about it. And so, I. Their meeting was at six o'clock. I was able to uh go over there and I just said, basically. You guys approached us, we weren't selling. It wasn't on our radar to start with. You came and talked to us and would like to purchase, so. It's really not high on our priority list. As high as it is on yours, so. But we have to cross the Ts and dot the Is. So, we need a certified survey. They said that they think they have one. Well, if you do, fine. If you got one, let's get it out of the archives. Make sure it's certifiable. Um, we're probably gonna have to make sure there's multiple properties involved with this because over the years. It's gained in size, so we'll have to make sure that there's no liens, titles, we'll have to do title searches. Things like that. So I kinda just said, look, and I'm dropping the ball back in your lap. You're the buyer, you find the stuff and come to us.
I thought that's what stage we were in, was a survey. We were waiting on the survey.
But I I I kinda left it with them to to make sure that you get this going. And if you want the cost here, bring it to the, bring it to the commission and there's a possible that we can do that. Um. Basically, that's what I told him. I said, I buy property, I got, I'm responsible getting all this stuff put together, not the seller. That's kinda where we're at now. We're the seller, even though we're not talking about a big monetary number. But it's basically, West Branch Township, find the stuff that we have to have. Let's cross the Ts, dot the Is, and then you guys can do it.
Did you ask them to be put on committee of the whole, it it, when they're ready?
Yeah, I just said, go ahead and contact us back when you, when you got something and. I'll work with you on it. But uh.
Anything else, Commissioner Scott, on your report?
No, that's all I have, but I know she has a question.
Do you have a question for Commissioner Scott?
Yes, I do. Commissioner Scott, I don't know, it's a good idea, bad idea. Uh, just asking a question. Um. My understanding is that West Branch Township owns the RV park, is that correct? Have we just leased it from them?
That's our understanding, yes.
Is there any chance we could just swap properties?
That's.
And in discussion.
Yeah, I brought that up myself. I'd just as soon do that. I I really would, or would they pay us a dollar? For the one property and we pay a dollar for the other property, you know?
Yeah, I think it'd be a great idea.
I was told that there was a resolution on their frame down their wall that said that they already gave it to us back twenty years ago, but I. I I haven't seen it yet, so I don't know.
Commissioner.
But nothing was transferred as far as registered deeds, as far as name or anything like that, so.
There'll be more to come on that, I'm sure.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiltsey?
Uh, it's early in the month. A lot of my committee stuff's still ahead of me, but I've been pretty busy. Um, as Commissioner Scott said, first off, I wanna thank him again for um going to Mills Township this past Tuesday. Uh, another big issue there continues to be a hot topic and will be, and we need to, we need to get some things figured out. It's the blight issue. Um, we've got new construction going, gonna be happening at Skidway Park. Uh, using local contractors, which is a uh a real good thing. Um, I also attended the road commission meeting with Commissioner Scott and the law enforcement. A lot of good stuff going on. Really happy to see the consistency with the uh social media, with uh the law enforcement. I think that's great. It's great for the community. To see what we're doing um with the Sheriff Department. And uh also, I know you guys heard me talk about this MISHDA Regional Housing Group. Um, I co-chaired the housing stock and was also involved with the um the rental housing um. Committee, and I was just asked to serve on the steering committee, so I'm really putting a lot of focus on this as Tim, you know, he he talked a lot about it. Um, this would be huge for our county and we have a great opportunity. Uh, there's a lot of things still to get figured out, but. Um, pretty much where we're at now, we have a steering committee meeting, gonna be there on the eighteenth to the twenty fifth in person. And then we gotta have everything submitted to the state by September first, so we're just gonna keep the throttle down and keep working hard on that. Um, another item, I remember a while back, Tim had sent to all of us commissioners of any of us had interest in serving on the non-motorized. Uh, vehicle committee through the state, and I signed up for that. Um, I actually got an email the other day. Uh, some of those representatives from state wanna come to our county. Uh, to keep this face to face meeting, which Tim, I'll keep you posted on on that, and that's in regards to non-motorized vehicles. For uh, um, you know, and also bicycle paths, walking trails, stuff like that. Um. That's, uh, this past Tuesday was a DHHS meeting, but I was out of state.
Is that it?
That's it.
I attended Hill Township. Um, they talked about the, there's numerous lakes in that township. They talked about some rentals that are going on. Um, they talked about their transport station. Um, the Historical Society was at both Hill Township and the Village. Uh, this past month, so they gave their uh, their talk, um. Information, I should say, on the Historical Society, which is a a very good talk and very interesting. They gave some pamphlets out. Um. Richland Township, I attended that meeting as well. They've done some hall upgrades with some of their urban ones. Um, they got a soundproofing system going in there, which seemed to work quite well. They talked about their campground. Their campground is going. Going uh quite well this summer. Um, they talked about a voter's box, purchasing a voter's box. Um. So I know that they had also said that they had been in contact, uh Don Johnson with with you. I believe, Brett, but um, and then the Village Press guy, I attended that as well. Uh, they got a two million dollar grant. For their upgrades for their wastewater uh treatment facility. Um, which is very exciting for them. That's gonna give them some upgrades, unfortunately, and not so much for maintenance. But that wastewater treatment facility out there is uh quite outdated. Um, and needs some definite definite upgrades. The Historical Society was there as well. Um, they've had some significant board changes. Uh, they seem to have, uh, things are going quite well there in the village. Also some blight issues, um, some camper issues. They're purchasing um some new equipment, a weed whacker. Um, talked about the roads a little bit there. I had a nine on one meeting last night. They made some budget changes. Um, over the overtime, the overtime is 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 very minimal. I think they had twelve hours last month of overtime. Uh, they did talk about their bylaws and uh they have to revamp their plan through the state, which is mandate, being mandated. Uh, also talked about job description for a possible director assistant. Um, uh, job. We are in the process of of just doing a job description for that, just to get the director over there some some help. Not sure if that's gonna be full time or part time at this point in time. But just right now, putting together a job description. And we have an open committee uh tonight, so that's it for me at this. Uh, there was not a Michigan Works meeting. There was no business. And we have an open committee uh, tonight. So that's it for me at this. Uh, there was not a Michigan Works meeting. There was no business. Uh, so there was not a Michigan Works meeting. That's it.
I had mine.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
I've got one real important topic EMS. Uh, we have recently uh, came to the grants with our new EMS director. His name is Justin Rogers. He's been working with EMS. He's been doing all of the trainings for, for EMS. Um, has a ton of passion, very smart. Feel he's going to do a great job. So our board got together last week, all the chairman on the board. Um, everybody came to agreement and Justin Rogers will be taking over uh, September first.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, general public comment. I see the Ogumah FFA group is here. Did you guys want to? Did you have anything to talk to us about? Come on up, guys.
Picture. Pictures, pictures.
Ogumah FFA group.
You guys won the state championship there.
You did? So congratulations.
Thank you. How do you want this?
Part of their, for, for, for nationals is they need a picture from every place where they had presented prior to states. So they had presented to you guys. So that's why we asked if you could get a picture.
So we come up, guys.
Absolutely.
When is Nat, when is Nationals? October thirty-first. So not everybody, some of you, are any of these, it's going to be at college or? Not all of our seniors. Oh, I guess seniors now, but. How do you want this? Where's Nationals at?
They can send you highlights if they wanted to.
Three and three now. There you go.
There you go.
Oh, good idea. Really, really on it today. There we go. Thanks, Paul. There you go. Perfect.
Sorry, this isn't a rock concert, but you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we did, we did pass a resolution congratulating you guys. You guys did get a copy of that?
Good job, you guys. Awesome. Keep working hard. Thanks, Paul.
Any other? Any other public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? No public comment on the phone?
Motion to adjourn.
Support, motion to adjourn will support at ten thirty-two. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Everybody have a good day.